It's still morning, correct?[2.49][2.49](laughing)
Yes.
Okay, well, I wish to call to order this work session of the Monroe County Board of Commissioners. Once again, all three Commissioners are present here in the NatU Hill Room. First item on our agenda is from legal, Mr. Baker.
Good morning. Is this to take up the Boathouse settlement, or?
Yes, thank you, I'm sorry. That is the first item on my agenda.
I thought I saw that. Last week, we negotiated a settlement of the case Monroe County versus Boathouse Apartments, LLC, that was, is currently pending in the Monroe Circuit Court I, was scheduled for jury trial beginning yesterday. We vacated the trial date, the judge did, pending review of the proposed settlement by the Plan Commission, which I believe happened last night, and I also believe was approved by the Plan Commission and reviewed by the Board of Commissioners this morning. Happy to discuss any facet of the settlement agreement or the case that you wish to hear about.
Mr. Jones.
Yeah, I don't really have any questions or anything. I just, I'm personally very, very disturbed by this. I will support it, but I just think this is extra proof that our justice system does not provide justice, that the wealthy have a huge woodup above the rest of us. If they can just keep on throwing their money at lawyers and all, I guess that's the one good thing about all of this, is that they wasted so much money on lawyers, but most people can't do that, so they just have to face the consequences. And this doesn't make me very happy.
Mr. Thomas.
Yeah, I agree. It's taken a lot of time from our very talented legal staff who have a pile of other things to do, and I am not happy about it. I supported it last night, and for the same reason I will support it today, because this needs closure, but this is not how things are supposed to go. And I will remember what happened. I'll just leave it at that.
It took, what, six years to get this resolved, which is just incredible, and you've gone through multiple iterations with the courts as well, correct?
Well, it certainly predates my time here. I've been here going on four years now, and this case pretty much, day one, landed on my desk, and it had already, in my personal experience, was a little dated, and at that point in time, almost four years ago. So, we, it is, it is a long-toothed case, and we have, gosh, fought tooth and nail all the way. We've been through two appeals to the Court of Appeals, where we were very successful. We ended up with a finding as a matter of law from the Court of Appeals that Boathouse Apartments violated both our building code and our zoning ordinance. It was remanded back to the trial court, and we were back to slogging it out again, and facing a jury trial where the result wasn't certain, you know, and that brings home the point of what a settlement is. It's a compromise, and it's said among trial lawyers that the best settlement is one that nobody's happy about. It's a compromise for both. And the settlement generally happens within a range, and the range is a continuum of what we think the jury verdict might be in any given case. And in this type of case, an ordinance enforcement case, one end of the continuum is, even when we've had the Court of Appeals say that they violated the law, our ordinance provides a range of fines, and at one end is zero. Even if they've been found to have violated the ordinance, the jury could come back with zero. And then on the other end is the cap that's placed on fines by Indiana Code. So, within that is where the settlement was reached, and I don't know, I don't know what the owner of Boathouse thinks about the settlement today, but I know what we think about it. And I think our thoughts and our unhappiness with the settlement is, doesn't make it seem like the best settlement. It doesn't make it feel all that good. But with anything that we do, especially in the litigation context, and to be clear, we are not a litigation shop. We are advisors to you all. And as part of our service to you all in the county, we do our level best to assist the departments who are charged with enforcement of ordinances, and providing them with legal representation, and occasionally in the courts, in matters like this one. And again, since I came on here, we've had a couple, at least, of ordinance enforcement cases that butted us against fairly large resources, not just fiscal money resources, but manpower resources. And so, we're a little, we're a four-attorney shop, and we've got plenty to do day in and day out, just with the normal municipal matters that come up. And then we're faced as well with slogging it out in a fairly aggressive litigation matter. We're not, we're not well-suited to it, but by golly, we do pretty good, and we have in this particular case. And it makes this settlement seem not very tasteful, but it is a compromise, and I think we rightly weigh the resolution of it to the reality that, of uncertainty with the jury, some uncertainty with court rulings that we were waiting on to the 11th hour and never received. Thankfully, they weren't necessary after all. So, anyway, I share your disappointment, but we did, we did our level best here, and I think we made good law that helps all of the counties here in Indiana enforce their ordinances. And so, I'm trying to see upsides, and that is, that is an upside. We did well here for all the counties in our state.
Thank you. Then, can I have a motion to accept this settlement?
I move that we accept this settlement with, again, great thanks to our legal staff and their talent. Thank you so much for your effort.
Thank you.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we take public comment? We don't, do we during work session?
Typically, if you're going to vote, you will take public comment, although this is a settlement agreement, so I'm not, I think you could go either way on that.
Does anyone have public comment?
We didn't take public comment last night.
Okay.
Not on this item.
I don't see anyone with their hand raised. Oh, well, I guess we have a question. Sir?
Sorry. Dave Asens with the B Square Bulge. And as long as there was some discussion about whether public comment should be offered, I figured I would ask a question, which is, where can we get a copy of the settlement agreement? Will that be posted to the website somewhere, or where can I get at that? That's the question. Thanks.
Mr. Baker?
Yes. So, as I mentioned a moment ago, the Plan Commission voted yesterday evening to approve the settlement agreement, and now we have a vote from the Board of Commissioners approving the settlement agreement. The settlement agreement is a contractual document that a representative of each of the boards will sign off on approving the settlement and entry into the contract, contract of settlement with Boathouse. Once all parties have executed that document, there is no confidentiality provision in the release document, so I suspect it's a, it's a public record that we can disclose upon a request that would come in any form. Doesn't have to be a formal public access request or anything like that.
It's in the packet last night from the Plan Commission.
And I believe it also, it's actually in our work session packet for today.
Yes.
That's where I reviewed it.
Just doesn't have the signatures, but that's the document that will be executed.
I'm sending, I also have a link I'm sending you, Dave.
So, can see no other public comment or questions. I'll take a vote on approving the settlement agreement between Monroe County and Boathouse Apartments, LLC. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes three to zero. Thank you very much, Mr. Baker, for your work on this. Would you please stay at the podium and talk to us about what you observed during the work your committee did in reviewing the RFQs for the, sorry, I'm drawing a blank here all of a sudden, for the work that, you were involved in a committee that reviewed RFQs for jail facility. And would you, we did get an email from the sheriff. Would you please tell us what you observed during the workings?
Sure. Kinda, I guess I'll just go on a timeline. That'll help me form my thoughts. My involvement with, with that particular task, that endeavor, came about when, when my colleague in the legal department, Jeff Cockrell, to use a legal phrase, recused from, from his involvement in the matter, and I think rightly so. I think one of the, one of the companies that submitted informational materials, I believe to you all, listed Jeff as a reference, and that being the case, Jeff had no choice but to cease any further substantive involvement in the, in the process. I'd hit a point in my litigation matters and appeals where I had time, and our other two attorneys had a full load. It seemed appropriate for me to, to fill Jeff's shoes, and I think, I think probably that was a good thing. I hadn't had any real involvement at all, or much familiarity with, with what was going on, other than just my interest or curiosity as a citizen of Monroe County in what, in the jail construction process. So, I came to it with a fairly clean slate of knowledge and uninformed set of eyes, a new set of eyes in the matter. So, made sense. I was happy to do it. And I think the first, my first involvement was a meeting that was held back in January in the legal department conference room. Jeff kind of chaired that meeting informally, kind of ran the meeting, which he does so well. I recall Jeff being there. I was there. Angie was there. David Gardner, Richard Kreider, Sheriff Marti. I don't remember anyone else with the passage of time. My memory is a little soft, vague there. But those are the folks that I remember being at that meeting. And at that point in time, it seems to me the main point of discussion was, how do we want to, how do we want to engage these companies? And there were three companies that we were, we were principally interested in, that we had received information, information materials from. We were interested in engaging three of, three companies in particular, and then the discussion really turned and focused on, how do we want to go about that? And, and there was much discussion around the table. I don't recall seeing much. Again, I was very new to the whole thing, and I, and so I was listening and observing more than anything. But the, the point of discussion was, do we, do we engage these companies individually, and, and then do we do it in an open forum, or a closed forum? And, and there, there was discussion about it. I think Jeff was interested in it being in an open forum, and then others wished for it to be in a closed forum. I really had no preference either way. It, the, what we were talking about reminded me a little bit in my mind of, of the process we go through when we receive bid packets and how we review those. We do those in, kind of in a closed matter, and then, and then they're decided upon in a, in a public forum. And I, in my mind, that's kind of how I analogized the way forward if we went in a closed, closed way, as opposed to an open way. And the decision was ultimately made that we would proceed in a closed forum, and I think the, the point of it was, and I'll connect this up to the email referenced a minute ago to this, the point was, I think, for efficiency and to, most importantly, have a, have a discussion with each of the companies that would be open and candid. There can be, in these instances, information that can be controversial, and maybe one side or the other might be reluctant to engage about, and the hope was that we could, in this important task, in this important project, have a very candid discussion with them, dialogue with them, that would help us pick the right company to carry us forward with this, this really important project. And when we completed this discussion during that first meeting that I attended in January, I sensed no dissent whatsoever. I heard no dissent whatsoever. All participated in the discussion, except maybe me, other than my listening and observing, which I do occasionally. A little unusual for a lawyer. And I left there firmly convicted that that's, that's what we were going to do, and everyone seemed perfectly fine with it. Jeff was too. And, and so that's, that's what we did. What I recall next was an email going out, and it might have been from Jeff, might have been from someone else, scheduling these companies over a three-day period. We were going, we were going to talk with three of them, and we would talk with them on separate days, as I recall it. My next involvement was that first appointment, for lack of a better way of putting it, because essentially, that's what it was. I don't remember which company it was that we talked to that first time, but I do remember, in addition to the company representatives who were there, I was there, Angie was there, Richard was there, David Gardner was there, the sheriff was not there. He sent his jail commander, and I believe the deputy jail commander, or the assistant jail commander, came as the sheriff's representatives. And, and that proceeded forward. We had another, another meeting a day or two later. I'm, same cast showed up for that meeting. I'm not sure that both of the jail personnel showed up for that one. May have been one. And same process. It was very, very much a, seemed to me, the presentations were formal, but the dialogue was very informal, very engaged. I thought helpful. And then the third, same, same process. I, again, I'm not sure that both jail personnel showed up. I think one did. I could be wrong. I took no notes during those meetings. It didn't seem to be a particularly complex matter. I was really interested personally in hearing them, watching their presentations, weighing what they were telling us, evaluating it a little bit from a, I'm not an engineer. I felt more like, and I wasn't thinking of it in terms of, in legal terms either. I was just listening to it and, and forming my thoughts about it all. Anyway, after the third meeting, which was the last meeting, I very quickly formed an opinion in my mind of, about these, these companies. And I suppose in my mind, I ranked them, who I liked the best, who I liked the least. I liked them all, actually. But I did in my mind rank them, and that was, that was the, the last of it for me, until a meeting was scheduled, and I'm a little vague about how it was scheduled, probably by email, in the council's conference room. I'll stop there before I go further with it, and I'll say, at no point, and this kind of goes back to the email, there's some suggestion or innuendo that those of us who are your employees were encouraged or persuaded or told to come to a certain result. That, no such conversation was ever had with me. No one asked me what I thought. I think I might have shared that I thought they were all great. I think I shared that with Jeff and Angie, but that's the normal chatter we have about any number of things. But as far as how I, how I, what, how I ranked them, or, or anything substantive, no one ever had a conversation with me about that, and, and if such a conversation had been had, I would have rejected it. I'm a, I'm a professional. I've been an attorney for 27 years, going on 28. I form my own opinions about things, and the rules of professional conduct require me, as your attorney, to form my own opinions, and whether you like them or not, and in exchange, you get to take them or leave them. At your own peril, either way.[1357.51][1357.51](laughing) But I have never felt any, I've never felt pressured by anyone in Monroe County government to think a certain way, or say a certain thing, or anything less than what I think. And, and I will say that if anything like that ever happened, I would reject it very pointedly. So, the suggestion or the innuendo in the email, at least as it concerns me, is false and unsupported by anything other than the writer's unsubstantiated personal opinion, and I think it's unfortunate. And I take offense to it, personally and professionally. So, taking us back to that, that, that fourth encounter, where we were asked to come up to the council's conference room, I think I was running a little bit late. That was pointed out in the, in the email. Thought that was interesting. I tried to be punctual. That day, I, something caused me to be late. Anyway, we, we sat down, and as I recall it, I think Angie or someone, I think Angie, we took a quick straw poll from everyone. What do we all think? How did they, how did they stack up? And it was easy for me to recall what I thought, and, and it just so happened that most everyone else, as I recall it, was of the same mind. I think Angie, and she can correct me as she, she does sometimes if I'm wrong, I think she was a little ambivalent about two and three, but we were all in agreement about one, and I think by the time we were done chattering about it, chatting about it, Angie was agreeable with the rest of us. So, I think at that time, a couple of, of the attendees had filled out an RFQ form, a score form. I didn't. I, yeah, I didn't, I just didn't. I knew how I was ranking them, and I think, and I think one of the jail personnel who was there at that meeting, who voted the same way I did, or gave us the same result ranking-wise as I did, I don't think he finished the scorecard either, but in any case, whatever. Angie, I think, asked if we, if we needed the forms, and in my opinion, in my legal opinion, I didn't feel that they were particularly necessary, and this is why. One, we were, the, the procedure that we had embarked upon at that first meeting in January that I attended was not one that, that's required by law. It was a way to facilitate our acquaintance and understanding of these companies and what they could do for us in designing and constructing a jail, and there weren't any, and therefore, there weren't any legal requirements about how we ranked these, these companies. To my notion, it was just, it was rather informal in that regard, and I didn't think that we necessarily, given that we were all unanimous, those present at that meeting, in, in how we ranked them, I didn't feel that the, that the scorecards added anything to the matter, because as I understood it, we were just going to convey to you how we ranked them. And from there, you all would then take that for what it was worth, and then proceed as you're required to do, and all boards of commissioners here in Indiana are required to do by statute, when you all want to construct a jail. So, I, that was my opinion. I stated it to Angie, and that was the end of that matter, and we, we finished up our business very quickly. It was a very quick meeting. And then I think, not too long after that, maybe a week or so, we, we heard that we needed to fill out score sheets. I was fine with that. It made me no difference one way or the other. I thought that the score sheets were redundant of our ranking, since we were all of the same mind. But I quickly filled out my, my sheet, and I think, I think I might have scanned it and sent it to Angie. It wasn't difficult to do. I didn't take any notes. I'm not a note taker. But it wasn't easy to, it wasn't difficult to do. In my mind, it was very easy to rank them and to score them. It wasn't, wasn't complex. So, that was, that was that. And I think that was the end of my involvement, until I received a very, a very long email that was, was written, and I, I think I received it along with all of the other attorneys, so it wasn't unusual. We, we often are, receive things for review and consideration and advice if, if asked or needed. I read the email, I've read it now three times, which is twice more than I usually review something, and it was to understand what the message was, what, what the point of the communication was, and I now have a very firm personal view of, of the point of, of the email, and I have a professional opinion about it, too. The, the premise of the email, and I, this blurs a little bit with my personal view, but it is my professional opinion, too. The premise of the email is, is a narrative that, the email is all about transparency. That's the purported purpose of the email. The premise of the email, in my professional opinion, is false. It suggests very directly at points throughout the email, and a little indirectly in other points, that there was some effort to undermine transparency in the manner that we went about our business in engaging these companies, and that is just completely false. That was, going back to that first meeting, it was about candor and efficiency and effective communication with this, with these companies. We, we chose the course that we chose, that everyone, including the sheriff, agreed with for those reasons, and from our legal perspective, we weren't particularly concerned And from our legal perspective, we weren't particularly concerned. We had formed the opinion that that process was lawful because, and not subject to open door law, because we weren't really a formal group appointed by you all. It struck me as very informal. Like, I was called to become a participant on the, of the group, on the spot, really, not by some formal appointment. It struck me, how we conducted things, to be very informal. Really, something different than what day-to-day we, we deal with as far as boards and committees and bodies that gather information and other, and take up public business that are subject to the open door law. So that concern wasn't at the forefront of my mind. But in any case, there was no effort by anyone to be anything less than transparent. That our, the goal of the open door law is transparency, and we always, we, across the board in Monroe County government, strive for that. And the attorneys in our office do our level best to ensure transparency in the broadest sense. So I think the notion that Angie or anyone else had formed some scheme to thwart transparency for whatever purpose is just, is false, and it's unfortunate. And particularly from the person who wrote the email. So, and I, I take exception to it. I was a participant in that, and I certainly wouldn't participate in anything that I thought was untoward, or sinister, or anything less than in accordance with the law. And I think, and I think I speak for the other, of the members of that, of that group, too, Richard and David, Angie. We did our best, and the, any, any suggestion to the contrary, I think is just, is not accurate, it's false, and, and I think ill-motivated. Those are the, the things that come to my mind. I'm happy to answer any questions. I've gone on pretty long, I apologize. But I'll answer any questions you have, anything that comes to mind.
Commissioner Jones?
Not at this time. I appreciate the explanation, because none of us were there. So it does help to have, you know, that account, and do appreciate it. And I, I feel like, you know, what it ends up coming down to was, oh gosh, it wasn't unanimous, it was a majority. And to me, that's, you know, it
It was unanimous for the, the folks that were in the room?
Yeah, that's true.
Yes, there was unanimity.
There you go.
If, 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 if your position is it wasn't unanimous, you're counting someone who wasn't there. And I don't think that's the way we count votes in these United States.
Yeah.
The other thing, too, that kind of bothers me a little bit, is if there was a problem, and this goes back to the email, and it's, it's lengthy, if there was a problem or a concern among anybody that participated in that process, about the integrity of that process, that we were being anything less than transparent, or adhering to the required level of transparency. I'm a little hard of hearing, and I can't help that, but I didn't hear it. And I'm, I'm, I'm pretty aggressive in my legal capacity about fixing anything that I think might be wrong, as quickly as I can, and correcting anything that might have happened that could be construed as wrong. I didn't hear anything. I was the only lawyer in that room, and not one person looked at me and said, hey, Lee, I've got a problem here. I'm not, not real sure that we're doing this the right way. I didn't hear any of that. I'm going back to the first meeting where everyone said, yeah, let's do it this way, including the sheriff. And not once during any of those meetings that I attended, including the very last one, did I hear anyone raise a concern about how we had done things, or the advice that I gave Angie, that, that we didn't need those forms. We were unanimous in how we ranked them, and, and the forms would add nothing that we weren't conveying to you to do with what you would, the ranking of those companies. So I, that bothers me a bit. It seems a little convenient to be nice about it, at this point, to, to, to claim that we had concerns all along, when I heard nothing. And I would have surely addressed them very quickly had I, had I heard them, and they'd been presented to me. And that, that was not the case. So again, the, the, the premise of the email is wrong, is false. The concerns that we weren't following a process that was appropriate or proper was not raised. So I, I feel like we did the best we could. We, and I think we came to the right result among us. And again, I, no one talked to me about how I ranked them before I expressed it for the first time. And I assume that the others had the same experience. So, anyway.
Yeah. Yeah, and, and I think that raises a really good question about why send such a long email about something that was a whole lot of nothing in terms of an issue. And it's unfortunate that, you know, our, our staff members have been maligned, and, and I don't think that's fair or right. I'm not sure what the purpose was of all of that. And I guess it was just another gotcha moment. I don't know.
Well, and, and there has been a complaint filed with the state, and we will get a ruling on that, too, as to whether or not things were done properly. And I, I think that we, we, we have that also going on, so.
Well, we sure do, and we'll prepare a response to the complaint, and we'll, we'll send that to the public access counselor, who will review it and make a decision. There are, most of the public, the open door law is very clear in its requirements, but there are certain facets of the open door law that aren't, aren't necessarily clear and a little unsettled. And we'll delve into that, because those areas are pertinent here. And our legal opinion that we weren't subjected to the open door law here may or may not have been correct. We're not always right, despite our very best efforts. But we have done well here in Monroe County in compliance with the open door law, and I think the public access counselor will agree with that. We have a very good relationship with him, and often seek counsel when necessary to ensure compliance where we're not certain. And when we, despite our best efforts, come up on the wrong side, the public access counselor is usually very helpful in, in giving us thoughts about how we can correct it. And we are, without any exception, very quick to take corrective action where necessary, and that, this, this matter will be no exception. We're either right, or we're not, and we'll fix, do whatever needs to be done to correct it. But I think the process that we followed was good, and it was informative. And I think we ranked them correctly, and the unanimity is proof of that.
Ms. Purdy, your name has come up a few times today. Would you like to add anything to what Mr. Baker has said?
Um, no. And I just want to say thank you. As, as we all know, I have felt very attacked by the email. And so it's, I am just extremely appreciative of being able to hear from, from legal half my commissioners who have been supporting me. I apologize. These are tears, because I'm just so appreciative of someone other than me giving the truth. And it needed to be done, and I am thanking, and I apologize again for my tears.
Don't apologize.
I also am very appreciative of you coming forward today. We have fabulous legal staff.
Oh, gosh, yes.
Oh, my gosh, we're so, so grateful, folks who work with us.
We have a fabulous staff. And it is not, it's, it's extremely unpleasant to see them being attacked in such a kind of gotcha way.
Did you have anything you wanted to add, Mr. Cockrell?
I don't think I could add anything that Lee hasn't stated. I was only at the, what I consider to be the scheduling meeting, so a lot of the factual stuff.
So helpful, so helpful to have you.
Thank you, thank you.
You're welcome.
You may be excused, I think?
Thank you.
I also want to have a discussion about what's going on with the Community Justice Reform Committee, or the CJRC. This committee's been in existence for close to two years, and I feel like that the most progress that's been made has been the selection of DLZ to help with our design work. And I'm very frustrated about not being able to move on some other stuff. And so I've asked Commissioner Thomas if she'll put up something for me, so that I can talk, rather than trying to talk in and operate my computer, which I'm not super good at with, with doing things on Zoom. But in January, I joined the CJRC and went back and looked at the report from Ken Ray and Alan Beck. And in that, I, in that report, I went through it and looked at what they talked about with their recommendations for the court processing. And I came up with a kind of a long list of what they were recommending as, in terms of changes. And part of that, I'd like to go ahead and read these into the, the record, if that's okay with my, my colleagues. One was to implement a population management coordinator program, so that they could monitor and track inmate lengths of stay. And to implement a case flow efficiency in, in the courts. That, according to the consultants, they didn't feel like this was going, this was happening very, very easily, or very well. I'm, I'm okay, thank you. Second was to increase the office space for the probation pretrial release unit. And that is not something that I think is going to be easily done today. Next was to refine the decision-making guidelines for pretrial release program. Provide weakened staffing for the pretrial release program. Currently, if someone is picked up, say, at 5:00 on a Friday evening, it's my understanding that they sit there till Monday, although I may, I may not be correct in that. I'm happy to be corrected if that's incorrect. It was recommended that they use software to monitor the elapsed time from filing of a case to the actual disposition, because we're seeing folks, the length of stay actually impacts the number of beds that are needed in a facility. So they said that the criminal court should analyze reasons for continuances and implement methods to control them. That we need referrals to, that the referrals that are made to specialty courts need to be expedited, rather than waiting a week or two weeks, or however long it is. They need a differential, differentiated case management, along with a process to control continuances. And that they consider the reduction or elimination of pretrial release charges for people that are later found not guilty. What we're, what's happening currently is if you are arrested and then later found not guilty, but have been put on a pretrial release with an ankle, I think they call them a bracelet, but you still have to pay the fees. And for some reason, I, I personally disagree with that kind of, of process. So I would like to propose that, given that we've had this report for almost two years, I would like to ask that we start to break up into subgroups, and that we ask a court processing subgroup to be formed of the judges, prosecutor, and public defender's office, and that they come back to us and respond to these kinds of things that were in the report. And I'd be happy to email them this, these recommendations, because, and I can, I even, when I went through this and, you know, was making notes for myself, I actually took out the pages, page numbers that I can refer them to. But I'd like, I'd like to see that, because what happens with the courts impacts the number of beds that we will finally want to tell our, our contractors that we want to have in a new facility. So reducing length of stay, improving court processes, is something that I have no control over, none of the three of us have control over, no one on the CJRC committee, except for those involved in the criminal court processes, have control over. So I would like to ask that we request this group to be formed, and that they tell us when they will come back to us with a response to these kinds of things. But I want to, I want to raise this with my colleagues here. I want to know if the court processing group is interested in having one or more courtrooms built into the new facility. This all impacts the kinds of things that, that I view as what we want. I know that surveys have been done, but surveys don't talk to me about processing and changing certain things.
So if, if I might ask if we could just have a conversation about this, I would, I would appreciate it. I, a couple of things come to mind. First of all, I don't think we can ask them to be a subcommittee, but I think we can ask them for a report. So I, I, so there's a minor word choice there that I, that I might ask to be amended. But, but I agree that we need to get this information. This is something we should have. I don't know that they'll be ready in less than two weeks. I'm guessing they're not going to be ready to provide this report, and I think it's a good idea to ask them when they're ready, and we make that the next CJRC meeting. I think it's been incredibly frustrating. The CJRC committee has been, you know, this roller coaster of highs and lows, and the, the highs have come from the public who are truly concerned and interested and active and really want change. And it may be change we can do, and it may be change we can't do. There are really thoughtful, heartfelt, soulful people out there who have provided really great input. And I think the lows have been just working in this environment where it's, it should have been how we're used to working, which is we talk to other departments, we, and, you know, I've, take another step back, sorry. I've been, in the last several weeks, I have had the opportunity and been asked to explain how county government works different, in different settings. And one of the things I talk about is the fact that we have so many appoint, unlike the city who has appointed department heads, we have elected department heads, and we work together because we have to work together. And, and addressing the whole criminal justice entity requires all of us to work together. We're used to working with a lot of other departments and other elected officials. We don't always agree, but that's how you come up with a better solution. It sometimes is slower, but it's collaborative. And collaborative doesn't mean everything goes one way. It just means you listen, you learn. It just means you listen, you learn, you have to make tough decisions. And just like this, somebody's unhappy. Somebody's not going to be entirely happy with the decision-making. There's no way to make a decision that makes everyone happy. There's no possibility that we're going to do anything with the CJRC-related intercepts zero through six that will make everyone happy. Get over it, we're not going to do it. So I am concerned because I thought that this committee was going to be more of the same, meaning conversations, debate, discussion, information gathering, thoughtful exchanges of ideas, a respectful set of debates and disagreements and arguments and well-argued points. And what had us become, has become, instead of collaborative, it has become adversarial. It has become, we're going to ask you the same questions 40 times, even if we've already said, we don't have the answers now, and we won't have the answers for a while. But we keep getting asked the same questions over and over and over again. It is adversarial, and it should not be that way. It is not what I expected, it is not necessary. And it has led to us running on this loop. And we're not, we're not moving forward on much of anything. And it seems to be okay with some of the folks in the committee. It is not okay with me that we are not moving forward. And I believe, in my heart of hearts, that we need to get our subcommittees going. And I agree that we need to ask the judicial group of the judges, prosecutor, public defender, probation, community corrections, whoever they want to invite, because we're not kicking this group, right? They can invite whoever they want to invite, to get working on this. Because some things we may be able to do now, and I really appreciate that you pointed that out, that there are some things we can do now. Maybe there's some things we can do now. So please, work on this. We can ask, I think we need to put this in an email and ask officially that they work on this. I agree. My question then is, what are the other subcommittees? And what are we going to do? And I would recommend that we have a facility subcommittee to work on siting, to start with. To look at all of those multiple properties that are possible. But I don't want to hog the conversation.
Well, as we start to talk about facilities, and I think that's an appropriate subgroup as well, I don't know, I mean, we have talked about this for a while now. I would like for Mr. Cockrell to share when it is appropriate to not have a public meeting when you're talking about site plans. Well, not site plans, citing, sorry, thank you.
And if you want to do site plans.
I'm emotional about this too, sorry.
Well, I would start with that there is a potential that site plans, to the extent it involves security risk, could be, should be done in executive session. I think you're talking about the negotiation and that aspect of purchasing property. And I think there is a state code that allows for, when we're discussing those kind of property transactions, that those conversations should be done in executive session. No final action can happen in an executive session, but that those conversations could have. It's a process we went through when we looked at the Fulton Pike site, you know? We, we looked and said, hey, here's, you know, three different properties we're looking at, there's this, and, you know? And so when we're looking at terms of those kind of things, you know, to me, it's somewhat common sense that you, you want to have those kind of negotiating and letting your negotiators know what your maximum price is or what those kind of things are done in, in private. And then, you know, the agreement will demonstrate that it's within that amount or not. Site location, you know, if you would have asked me that question 10 years ago, my answer might be a little different than it is today. But, because 10 years ago, I would have said something to the effect of, oh, we just want to do it so we can get a better price. I think, right now, I think that there's also the aspect of, you know, with real estate being the hot commodity, it's been the last few years with COVID, and I know it goes up and down and all that. But, you know, the availability of the property, when we're talking about, hey, we want to look at this site or that site, is, is as much a part of the risk and concern as the actual, the price of the property, right? So, you know, we've got two appraisals, so we know we're not going to overpay based upon that. But, you know, making sure that, you know, we talk about and we are securing the property before, before it maybe even gets hits the open market or something like that is a real reason that we would, we would want to do this in executive session. That isn't to say you have to, right? There is nothing in the law that says you can't have those conversations with the public. But I think, from a practical perspective, if you want to get the correct property at a, at a price, particularly if you're looking to try to get a discount, then you need to do those things in executive session.
I think that it's reasonable to do with taxpayer money, yes. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off earlier about some of the other discussions, but I think it was important to, to talk about that when we start to talk about the sites and the facility.
Yeah, yeah, I just, I have been disturbed by the extent to which members of the committee and some people in the public have assumed that we've made all kinds of decisions that, yes, we need to make. We had hoped to make them in the course of civilized conversations among each other. And it just does not seem that it's been possible to do that. A lot of the time, it feels more like we're on trial. And by we, I want to, I mean, the commissioners. This was not the purpose of that committee. That committee was actually formed before the decision was made that we needed a new jail. And it was formed to look at ways to make putting people in jail less necessary, to help people avoid having any interactions with the court system, which frequently really messes up people's lives. Unfortunately, we have not really headed in that direction at all. And it seems that, well, that everyone's pulling in different directions and just looking for ways to show any small action that hasn't, that in some way has not seemed appropriate to someone.
I think, for me too, especially after hearing the DLZ presentation, you know, when they laid out sort of their timeline for, for things. We have to know certain things before we can actually make some of the decisions that they want. So that's why I, I think we need to have this kind of report or response from a judicial group. I would like to personally, sometime in the near future, form a treatment group. We should know within, I hope, two weeks, whether or not there's going to be funding for regional mental health facilities, which is being considered right now in the state legislature in House Bill 1006. And perhaps there are opportunities to work with private concerns, like we saw out in Tucson, with the Connections, Connections Health Solutions, sorry, it's on my pen, that's what I was looking for here. And, and like they have, like has been put into place up in Morgan County, actually, where they have detox center, they have long-term kind of inpatient setup, they have transitional housing, they have all kinds of stuff that, again, if we can prevent people, that intercept zero that we've talked about, you know? But we, we've learned a lot over the last four years that, that we've been looking at these things. And, and I, I know that the consultants were actually hired before I was caucused into my position, which literally, in another 10 days, it will, so it will be four, four full years. So I, I want us to move forward. I don't want people sitting in a jail that's unconstitutional. I don't want people working in a jail that we have recently had described to us. And, and I, I really, really applaud the work that is going on in the jail right now by the sheriff and by the jail commander. I think that if that improves the working conditions for the staff, if that improves the kind of attitude and behavior of people who are inside there, I am very, very much in favor of this. But I am not in favor of continuing to pump this down the road while people sit in that awful, awful facility. And that is what is driving me at this point. I want progress, I want it now. And like I said, I am very emotional about this. Any one of us could have someone that we love in, if, in that facility. It would take a whole lot in certain situations. And I don't want them there.
And, and I would just, I would just say that, you know, yes, the people who are in the facility certainly deserve better. Their families deserve better, the, the public, the taxpayer deserves better than what, what the CJRC has become. And, and I think progress is needed. I absolutely agree, and I think we all do, that, that's what we need to focus on, is moving forward. And I think, and I, and I did, and I did hear and clock that, that we, we'd been told that there's, you know, this potential problem of siloing information. And, and yes, there might potentially be more than one meeting to go to. And yes, I, we, we understand that, I understand that. I, but I also understand that trying to make, trying to make progress right now with the larger group is just not working. And, you know, we, we got some, you know, it's not to say the whole thing's been a waste, it hasn't. We've gotten some good survey results, we've had some good discussions at some points. But I just feel like progress requires focus. And, and we are not, and again, to restate, we, it's not going to be perfect, but we can also, we cannot be paralyzed by analysis either. We are going to make, we're going to do the very best. I think it's important to note as well that we are not asking, and we never asked the CJRC to make decisions for us. The decision about siting and building a facility is up to the council and the commissioners. We also, I would assume, and I, I'm, I think I'm not going too far in saying this, that, that we would like to have the input of the sheriff and jail commander. But we're, this is not for the CJRC to make a decision on. We, we have a decision to make. We're, we have been elected to make these tough decisions. We've made them all along, think back to COVID, not that long ago. We made tough decisions. And we got pushback then too, by the way, but.
But we also were the only county in the state that did some really novel things to keep our, our people housed, healthy, fed.
Yeah, we were, we were elected to make tough decisions. So we are, we are not abdicating our responsibility. The CJRC was intended to help inform this, this first decision. But we, it's supposed to be intercept zero through six. There are a lot of other things that we have to talk about. And I don't want us to have a large group focused on something that a smaller group needs to make a decision about and need some work on.
Yeah, yeah. But, yes, I, I agree with that it needs to be the commissioners, the council, people from the sheriff's office that work on what goes in the facility. But then, then I also need to hear from that judicial group. Do we need one courtroom, two courtrooms? Is your preference to eventually be co-located? Because that impacts the amount of property that, that we have to purchase. And we've also, you know, I was talking to a member of the, of the community yesterday, and was explaining that jails have a much shorter lifespan than a traditional building. You know, we're sitting in a building right now that, although it's been rehabbed, was built in 19, finished in 1907. So, you know, we're, we're looking at a well over 100 years. Jails generally have a lifespan of about 30 years. They're used hard. Well, if we buy property that has enough space to do that next build or the expansion that would be, what would be the next build, 30 years from now, people won't be having to go through this same kind of process. And, and also, if we build the right facility, it is not used as hard. And we, and we've heard that now. So maybe by building the right thing, we extend the life of the jail initially even. So, yeah, it does matter whether you've got porcelain versus stainless steel toilets at some level. And it does matter if you've got food at the door when people are brought in. So I, I think that, that there are a lot of things that, that we have thought about. And I, I agree with Commissioner Thomas that we have heard a lot of good things. We have, we have gotten pushback, but it hasn't, it hasn't discouraged me.
No.
And I, what, what, actually, part of what I'm encouraged about is I feel like there are people in the community that are willing to step forward and help with some of the things like reentry, especially, to help with figuring out some of these treatment challenges that we have. So I am, I am not discouraged about what we've listened to at this point. But I, I, I want to know, are we going to, are we going to ask people to meet in 12 days? Or are we going to suspend things for right now? What, what is the pleasure of my colleagues?
I think we suspend and ask the judicial group that, and to ask them when they can report to us, and that'll be our next meeting. And if they, and if they aren't ready, I think we should still meet in maybe a month or two, maybe three, I don't know, but in a bit, so that we can report from the facility side anyway. I think, I think that's going to be what CJRC should be, is sort of the hub that, that receives information, asks questions for further consideration, not challenging. This isn't about challenging and gotcha. This is about receiving information, asking good questions, thinking about other ways of doing things, providing input and advice. Hopefully, it can turn into that again. But I, so I would, I would ask that maybe we get this written up in an email or get it sent over to the Board of Judges and ask them what their preference is in terms of when we should meet again.
Well, and also the public defender's office and prosecutor's office, yeah.
And, and I think, you know, we, we've been hearing things about, oh, we should have so-and-so speak at the CJRC, you know, whatever it might be. I think some of those recommendations are great. They're things we already had on our list. And I think we'd need a group to deal with treatment. It could be intercept zero, but definitely five and six. Really reducing recidivism, and, and that may have to be a couple of groups at some point. But for now, we could start with one. But to think about all those community groups, and that's who those presentations should go to. We will, I, my commitment, and I know, I can speak for all of us on this one, our commitment is to be as transparent as possible, as often as possible, even if we're not having public meetings about siting the facility. Once we have information, we will be as transparent as possible. We will do as much in the public as possible. And I would ask, because we've got judges, prosecutor, public defender, et cetera. They have been sitting in CJ, or some members have been sitting, not all of them, have been sitting in CJRC, and we've all talked about transparency. Those meetings that they have should be public meetings, they should be transparent. And they should take public comment at those meetings when they go through and work on those judicial processes. I would ask that they do that. I think that's the only thing that, that's fair to ask on behalf of all the taxpayers and all the people in the community who are concerned about this. The processes are the driving force right now. Let's, we need their information, but the public needs their transparency. So that's my challenge to them.
I agree with everything.
I'm making notes here about who and, and what we need to, to send out here. Yeah, and I would like. Yeah, and I would like for us to put together the facilities group. And, you know, as I, as I sit here thinking about this, there are people that, we know the names of the people who've come and spoken to the meetings. Those are people that I would start with to tap for things like the treatment group, the reentry group. They've already shown an interest in what we're doing.
And a commitment.
Yeah, and a passion for what's going on. And so I will try to, if possible, work with Courtney Mosher in the council office and get that going. Also, work with our council colleagues on which of the different groups that they want to participate in. I hope it's more than one at times. I know I'm extremely interested in the treatment group. I believe my colleagues, at least one or two of them are also. I also, I care about the reentry kinds of programs. And we saw some great things out in Arizona, again, with release and planning that right at the facility, so...
And transitional housing.
The transitional housing, and I think that the DLZ spoke about things on Monday related to those kinds of things, too, where they were talking about having space in the jail where other entities come in to work on some of the stuff that we're talking about here. So all that has to go into the planning for what a facility would look like. And so I applaud our county council colleagues who said beds, you know, no more than 400 beds. But I need other information before I want to sign my name to the dotted line of that.
Yeah, I know one of the things we talked about is the fact that if we have treatment facilities inside the jail facility, that that, to me, that reduces the number of beds you need overall, but it counts toward that bed count. So I think we just have to, I think one of the things we need is flexibility. I certainly want, for me personally, I want to see the smallest bed count possible and the biggest programming space possible and the biggest treatment space possible. Because that's how we're going to reduce recidivism. I don't, if, I don't want to build a big jail to fill it. That's not my goal, and I, and you know, my colleagues have said the same thing. That's not, you know, we've expressed that. So I appreciate that. I appreciate we've had the conversation. And I think, I think, I think for the first time in a bit, I'm feeling optimistic that we can make some progress.
Well, thank you. Well, and also, I look forward to some of the information we asked DLZ to give us. We had asked, like, I personally had asked if there is data on, if you have used this direct supervision model, what that does to turnover of the jail staff. And certainly, with the kinds of facilities that we've seen in Indiana as well as other, in other locations, because of the way things are built, it requires less staffing. So we also want to see model, a building that puts less emotional strain on our staff.
And we did, I mean, and I think this is one of the many things, you know, we learned a lot on our tours. And, you know, the list of many things we've been, you know, dinged for, my gosh, you went to Arizona, oh, my gosh. Yes, we went and we learned a lot. And it's led me to conduct more research. And I think we have more research to do individually and together on, on very specific issues like staffing and direct supervision. Because what we heard from some of the facilities was that using direct supervision as the method of supervision within the jail facility is, actually takes less staff. So I, you know, this is just, I've got a long list of research to keep working through, and I'm still doing it, so.
And, you know, I referenced talking with a constituent yesterday. That person suggested that we also post our vision, which I don't think we've done. And we did express our vision a while back. Post that and also post even our notes from our visits to the different facilities. And so that would include what we've seen and what councilperson Iverson saw. But to get those notes up, they don't have to, I, I've written things. I can certainly share them.
Yeah, there are some things that I think, I think we could create a pretty strong list of things that we like, things that we talked about, things we thought were innovative, things we might want to explore that we've learned from other facilities. I think when we've had some pretty honest exchanges with employees and staff members at various places around the country, and so there are some things I won't, I wouldn't put on the website.
Well, we can, we can look at stuff, yeah.
I just wanted to comment that the vision that we expressed came from the notes that were taken as we visited these various facilities. There was no meeting between us where we decided exactly what we wanted. And we don't know exactly what we want. That vision was just what could be a possibility based on what we had seen.
Yeah, I think, I think that also, if I can figure it out in my own head, I think one of the things that Debbie Fish, a community member, asked at one of the meetings recently is if we could just kind of create a spreadsheet of what we saw at different facilities, you know, at that, and sort of, in my mind, I want to rank those. Yes, for me, I like that direct service, or direct supervision kind of model. I liked having an individual rec space for each pod. If that's not possible, then I want to go for one pod for two, two pods for one rec space. Definitely single story. I mean, that's what we're hearing all across the country, basically, at this point. So I think if we can kind of create some kind of metric spreadsheet, whatever, that I think it would help people with the comparison that we have done in our minds, because we've seen a lot of the different places, but other people didn't get to see them.
Yeah, and I can work on that and then send it out to you all to add your thoughts, too, and then we can throw it on the website. But, you know, I think if you talk to the individual members of the CGRC, if you talk to the individual members of relevant departments for any of the intercept zero through six, you would see that there's a heck of a lot of agreement.
Yes.
And that gets, you know...
Gets lost.
That gets lost in the fact that there's this like, oh, we gotta, we gotta prove whatever, we have to do whatever. You know, let's not lose sight of the fact that there's a great deal of agreement. But I think we're stalled. And what, I want us to move forward. You want us to move forward, you want us to move forward. Let's get going. This is, it's becoming painful.
It is, it is. And like I said, I don't want to, I don't want to have delays for even a single day. And I think if we can create some of these kinds of reports that we're talking about, then we have things to react to. The community has things to react to. And so until we see some of that, it's harder. And it's the same thing, you know, we heard from DLZ that once we start to put things on paper, then we can take it out to people to get reactions.
Yeah, yeah.
So...
Thank you.
Then we'll suspend CGRC meetings for the time being. I will get out an email to different groups, individuals, and we will try to move forward. And I thank everybody for their patience and time today. Thank you both for having this discussion with me. I appreciate the fact that you're willing to, that you have the same feeling about this, so I really appreciate it.
Absolutely. Our hearts are in it, too.
Thank you.
May I recommend that you vote on that?
That we've, oh, we have to have a motion.
So moved. Second.
All right. Call for a vote on suspending CGRC meetings until further notice. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passes three to zero. Thank you very much.